Well, in the meantime, we can say that we did attend the borough's conference. I'm going to skip on you now.
No.
It was the chief, the mayor, myself, and Vice President Bruce. And we went up to Hershey, Pennsylvania for the Borough Associations. And we represented Eddystone while we were there. We did see other Delaware County boroughs represented. There weren't a lot, though.
I think Marcus Hook was there.
Upland was there. Yeah. Yeah. CrossFit partners. CrossFit partners. Yeah. Well, we made a lot of connections. We got a lot of good information that we have to bring to the borough. We did get like a lot of templates on playground equipment that we hope to bring to our new project ideas. We do have a couple of speakers that are going to come and introduce new things to the borough on the state behalf, stuff that we weren't even aware of.
Playground equipment is so expensive.
It is.
One loop was seventy thousand dollars.
Wow. Yeah.
And one, one loop.
We were looking into the Christmas decorations.
Oh, my God.
They had a tree that was...
Chalky tall?
Yeah, but it was metal. It was a metal cage that went up. And it actually would open. It looked like a teepee.
Yeah.
And I said, "The kids will be climbing on it." And they're like, "No, we never had that problem." I said, "You've never been in Eddystone?" Kids will be climbing it.
Hershey loved it. It was lit. It was beautiful.
It was beautiful.
But one showed us that you could open it, go in and sit.
Yeah.
Walking. That was a lot of walking.
A lot of walking.
We did nine thousand steps in one day.
Yes, we did.
A lot of walking.
Seven thousand.
Yep. We did nine thousand first things.
You've got a monster. It's three thousand.
That was a cross. Some had escalators that worked. Some metal lathe didn't work. Some noises were there.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. Wow. Yeah.
Everybody. Let us wait up this ass.
I don't think we're going to end up with that.
I never know why we...
I didn't print it.
I called it black coffee.
Copy or not, it's okay. All right. Let's go to the...
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Bennett. Councilman Bolton.
Here.
Councilman Perry.
Here.
Councilman Stewart.
Here.
Councilwoman Walker.
Here.
Vice President Bruce.
Here.
President Hall.
Here.
Mayor Hughes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Please rise and remove your hats. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our borough. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity as also with restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. God is to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We have just adjourned from an executive session to discuss employee and legal matters.
Yes, I do. That's on the twenty-eighth of June, we will have our senior health care. Do we saw? Focus will be on Alzheimer's and dementia as well as other health, I'm concerned for seniors. We have some vendors coming out, Easton V I T, Delco, Cosa, have some home health agencies coming out as well as a group called Align with the Purpose. And this group helps seniors and teaches them how to use electronic as well as help them to learn how to book appointments.
Oh, that's awesome.
And help find, help to find a doctor. You know, since close closure, a lot of people with doctors. This group will come out and help them, show them how to find a doctor.
No, is there any charge for any of this or is it free to residents or?
Never a charge.
Awesome. And what is...
It's all free.
Sorry, what was the date that we had then?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty?
Saturday.
Eleven AM to one PM, right?
From eleven to one.
Yeah. And it's on the Joe Weesaw?
Joe Weesaw. I'll have a new flyer coming out Friday tomorrow. Everyone will get it, share on your page. And hopefully seniors will come out and take it back to you, though.
Good stuff, man. Do you have anything else? Is that it? Okay. I didn't have any other announcements. I think we had some announcements. All right. Our upcoming public meetings, we have air an executive session on July fourteenth at six PM. Followed by our council meeting at seven PM. So we have a presentation by Kathy Sparr. Justice, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You're from the Tower of Panning Department. This is for Vision Zero.
Yep.
Yeah. 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 Yeah, so my name's Kathy Sparr, I'm an infrastructure planner with Delaware County Planning Department. And I was the project manager for Vision Zero Delco. Vision Zero is a goal of zero fatal crashes and serious injury crashes on our roadways, which I realize sounds like pie in the sky. But actually, Hoboken, New Jersey has managed to do it as Jersey City. So I think if Jersey can do it, we can do it.
Especially North Jersey.
Right? So, I mean, come on, like, we're Delco, right? So, and quite frankly, Eddystone is already doing the work. I was here just the other week. We were working on a road safety audit for Route Two ninety-one and Seville. So you guys are already doing the work and so really something. What this is just about is unlocking more money.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right? Let's try and make that happen, right?
So this will help us with grants.
Yes, it'll help with grants.
For these issues.
Yeah. It's all about the money.
Yep.
There you go. And I'm here to tell you how to unlock that. She was not going to show him here too for us.
They should show the attraction.
Awesome.
Is it the Daily Mail tonight?
That's not going to unlock the money. I mean, it might unlock the money for you personally, but it's not going to unlock the money for the borough. By the way, the last time I was at a borough meeting, we were over at the fire department. And this building is amazing. And like, it looks fabulous in here. I was like tired on it. I was like, "Why are we coming here? Where is this place?" And last week, and I was like, "Oh, nice." We're proud of our little borough. Yeah, no, this is a nice building and I like the flag through the window and the background. So that's cool. All right, awesome. Thank you so much, Chief. So we already, I already introduced myself, but this is what we're going to talk about tonight. We're going to talk about what Vision Zero is. I already said that, so we'll fly right through that. We're going to talk about the state of road safety in Delco and Eddystone. We also did a lot of community engagement on this, so we're going to talk about what we heard from the residents that we talked to. We are going to talk about some of the systemic type of crashes that we profiled and what those countermeasures are to address those safety issues. And then we're going to talk about how we're going to take action moving forward. So like I said, this is an approach to eliminating traffic fatalities and serious injury crashes on our roadways. This isn't just a one-size-fits-all. This is a multifaceted approach where it's like education. It's about us taking responsibility as drivers because we are all responsible when we're on the road. And if we're looking at our phone, which we're not meant to be doing anymore, right, Chief? That's correct. You know, whether we're drinking and driving, whether we're just doing the California stuff at stop signs, we're responsible for that. And our roads should be safe for everybody. It's also about how we engineer those roads. It's about enforcement, so working with our police to make sure that they have the tools to enforce rules of the road. So what's Delco's place in Vision Zero? Because you know, we don't own any roads. Delco owns not a single road. But we believe that safety is important and that's an important foundation to have in our county. And we see ourselves as an organization that can facilitate collaborating with our neighbors, collaborating with PennDOT, collaborating with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. We also see ourselves as a group that can organize the PennDOT crash data, which is really not user-friendly, and make it easy for folks like you to use and look at. We're also a guide for funding because a lot of times we do know where to get the money and we want to make sure that you guys are able to bring it back home. So what's Eddystone's place in this? Like, why should you bother adopting the Vision Zero plan that we worked on? Well, there's that money. It unlocks federal dollars. It's also an opportunity to leverage. It can bring PennDOT to the table, it can bring D V R P C to the table. When you say we believe in Vision Zero, their ears are going to perk up because this is like a thing right now. Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission is working on their own regional high injury network and Vision Zero plan. It helps identify projects, areas that you can improve your roads to make them safer. It provides opportunities to collaborate with your neighbors because traffic safety doesn't end at the borough boundary. And it also says that you guys believe in safety and that you care about your residents and their well-being. So what's exactly going on in Delaware County with the crash data? Well, from 2018 to 2022, a hundred and thirty people died in traffic crashes on Delaware County roadways. Twenty-eight of those people were struck and killed by walking and two people were struck and killed by biking. We also know that speed kills. If you are a pedestrian and you get hit by a car that's going twenty miles an hour, you have a ninety percent chance of survival. But if that car is going forty miles an hour, you only have a twenty percent chance of survival. Humans are frail. We are not iron men, right? The physics doesn't work out very well when it's between us and a car. So, speed kills. Fifty-six percent of fatal or serious injury pedestrian crashes happen when walking or in the road or crossing the road. It's a thing in Delco. I don't know what it is. We walk in the road. There could be a perfectly good sidewalk. We walk in the road. I cannot explain this. Our consultant was very perplexed by it. And honestly, I caught myself walking the road, in the road, the other day in media when there was a perfectly good sidewalk available. So there you have it. Fifty-one percent of fatal or serious injury crashes occur at intersections and eighty-five percent of all fatal crashes occurred on PennDOT roads. So we have to have PennDOT as a partner in this. So what's going on in Eddystone? So in Eddystone, you guys have, so you're not at the bottom. You're not at the top either. There were eighty-three crashes from 2018 to 2022. And you have the thirty-second most number of crashes among Delaware County municipalities. And partly, you guys are small, right? You're not a big borough, so that helps keep your numbers down. It's six crashes for every mile of road. And you had a couple. You had one pedestrian death, eight pedestrian crashes, no bicyclists, which is great. Twelve serious injuries and two deaths on your roads. Sixty-eight of those crashes were on state roads, which is really not a surprise since you have two ninety-one going through your community. And fifteen crashes are on local roads. So one of the things that we did when we were developing this and working with the data is we developed what are called crash profiles. And we selected five crash profiles that are, and crash profiles are crashes that, types of crashes that occur again and again. And just come up over and over and over. So it might be like, you know, a pedestrian getting struck in an area where there's no sidewalk, which is an example of one that we have. Or it could be, you know, left turn at a signaled intersection. These just come up over and over and over again. So we selected five for the whole county. And three of these crash profiles show up here in Eddystone. By selecting these crash profiles, it allows us to select solutions and opportunities to improve those areas. So we're going to discuss that in a little bit, but you guys do have three crash profiles. So the other thing that we did, because for me, it was really important that there was geographic representation throughout the whole county, since this is a county-wide plan. We divided the county up into the existing planning districts. So the planning districts of Delaware County are how people get appointed to the planning commission for the county. Eddystone is part of District Two. By doing this division, it ensured that there were, correct, we had corridors of concern or what's also known as a high injury network that was throughout the whole county. If we hadn't done that, there only would have been crashes pretty much in Chester County and Upper Darby that showed up. And just because, you know, Chad's Ford doesn't have as many people doesn't mean that they don't have serious crashes. So that's why we did that, because we wanted to make sure that everybody was being reflected throughout the county. So we also pulled together data for, and I should have changed that to District Two, but you guys are in District Two. There were a total of two thousand five hundred and fourteen crashes from 2018 to 2022 in District Two. It was the third most number of crashes among the planning districts. So what is really important about all that is there are three point eight miles of high injury network in this district. And they're highlighted in both the orange and the teal color there. So lots of stuff going on in this neck of the woods. So this is our overall corridors of concern or high injury network for the whole county. As you can see, we managed to work it out so that there was crashes reflected. And if you think about it, like, these areas make sense if you're familiar with all these areas in the county, like all the way out to Chad's Ford and Concord Township, two oh two and Route One. Not a great location, right? And that was, you know, also important. Not surprisingly, there are other places that pop out, like Route Two ninety-one in Chester. This is not a no-brainer, right? Or West Chester Pike. D V R P C is also working on their high injury network. It's, that is the regional high injury network or the R H I M. And they have identified Route Two ninety-one in, here in Eddystone as part of their high injury network. And then also, I guess that is, is that Thirteenth Street or Business Route thirteen? Chester Pike. Chester Pike, yeah. To along the border of the north. And I mean, like, to be honest, this is no surprise, right? There are crashes that occur frequently there. D V R P C's regional high injury network has about a million miles of high injury network. And we wanted to make sure that our high injury network was something that was, we could take a bite of the pie at, feel like we got something done. So we really focused on the most dangerous of the dangerous roads in the county. And ours is only a total of twenty-eight miles. But as we keep moving forward, we'll keep taking a bite of this pie, both the D V R P C regional high injury network and our high injury network. This is a layered process, so there are multiple opportunities, whether there's necessarily something reflected in our specific plan or whether it's D V R P C's, because we adopted D V R P C's high injury network as well. So what did we hear? So we had a Vision Zero task force that's actually required to meet the requirements of a Vision Zero safety action plan. And of course, all the expected people were in that, like PennDOT, F H W A, D V R P C, Delaware County Transportation Management Association. And then we also had folks like Bicycle Coalition and Walkable Springfield. We also had A A R P, believe it or not, A A R P is really into this stuff. They have a thing called Walkable Livable Communities. And so they want to make sure that people can get around where they want to get around. Even the Harvest Association was on our team. And then we tried something new. We worked with what we call safety ambassadors, the Delco Safety Ambassador Program. And this was an opportunity to elevate voices of our residents and have them actually participate and help us with the community engagement because they know their communities best. So we wanted to make sure it was rooted in community. So we had sixteen safety ambassadors from all over the county. And we put them in pairs or groups based on their planning district. And they went out and talked to their neighbors. And they went everywhere and they kept me very, very busy. Because I had to provide them with all the stuff that they needed to go out, talk to their neighbors. So they went to libraries. They went to Y M C As. They went to blood drives. I mean, it's better to get somebody to fill out a survey than when they can't boot. That's right. They went to farmers markets and senior centers. They went, talked to their legislators. They went to council meetings. Businesses, we had some going to nursing homes and talked to the folks who worked there. While they were waiting at the bus stop, they went to community events. They were everywhere. They, I mean, like, literally ninety-plus engagement events across the county they worked on. They also helped us with some focus groups. One of the things that was really important to me when I went into this is I wanted to make sure that we did a focus group that included our first responders, our crossing guards, and our school bus drivers, because they see it all. They are literally where the rubber meets the road. And we learned a lot from them. And then we had a couple townships specifically invited us to come up from Providence and Chester Heights. And then we also talked to, we went to the Chester Senior Center. So we were out there a lot, but I'm really doing the crossing guards, school bus drivers, first responders. Really a highlight for me of good planning and making sure their voices were heard. We also did community mapping. So everywhere anybody went, including the planning department, we sent people out with maps and little dots that people could put, you know, put on a map and say, "This intersection is dangerous." Or they had markers that if there was a corridor that they thought was dangerous, they'd draw a line on that corridor. Like, nearly seven hundred comments. And then our awesome G I S department digitized all of those comments. And so you can actually go to our website and like dig into that data interactively. So it's not just a static map anymore. It's a real live, interactive map that you can check out. So honestly, what we heard really isn't going to come as a surprise to anybody in here. It didn't come as a surprise to me. Speeding is a problem. People want drivers to slow down. They want traffic calming improvements. They want reduced speed limits. People felt the most unsafe when they were walking or rolling and biking. They want protected bike lanes, separated paths. They want complete sidewalks, sidewalks that don't suddenly end or sidewalks that aren't well-maintained. They want these things maintained. They want better street lighting. Speed bumps, more crosswalks, all of those things. And the other thing, and again, no surprise, people aren't following the rules of the road, right? And so they want enforcement. They want more enforcement of the rules of the road and dangerous driving behavior to be deterred. Now, this is always a point where I point out that Pennsylvania is one of thirteen states that does not require driver's education. So we are passing all of those bad habits that we have onto our children. Something to think about. My kids are sixteen. Two at one time, sixteen. I don't wish that on anybody.
Bless you.
Yeah. I don't wish that on anybody. I'm not looking forward to the insurance bill when it finally comes after they have their license. But now it's definitely something that I think about when I'm driving, like, what habits am I passing on? And when we're stuck behind a Delaware driver, my kids will be like, "Ah, I'm from Delaware." And I'm like, "Oh, boy, that's me." So. So now we're going to talk about these crash profiles, these systemic issues that I had mentioned. We came up with a total of five of them. These are the first three. Again, to make sure that municipalities had opportunity to act on safety solutions, we didn't just focus on PennDOT roads, right? Yes, eighty-five percent of the fatal crashes are on PennDOT roads, but there's not a lot you guys can do about that, right? You have to work with PennDOT and it takes time. And so if you want to make quick solutions, and I wanted everybody to have that low-hanging fruit to go after, we had to have some local options for you. So we did. We came up with some local options, like crash profile number four, crashes on local roads at unsignalized intersections is an example. Really, three of the crash profiles do provide local opportunities. So these are the three that come up in Eddystone. This first one is definitely more of a PennDOT issue, but B R U is vulnerable road user. Vulnerable road user is a pedestrian, a bicyclist, a small child, senior citizen. Those are all considered vulnerable road users because you can't see small children or big giant cars and senior citizens can take a while across the street. So, you know, these are options that we're looking to move forward on. We also wanted to come up with, like, what are these quick options that you could enact right away? And so we developed a quick build countermeasure toolkit. There are twelve quick build solutions in that toolkit. However, that is part of a total of fifty traffic calming solutions or traffic safety improvement solutions that we have an entire glossary of. I mean, consultants put together a glossary that has pictures of every single solution because a picture is worth a thousand words and helps people to understand what we're talking about. So these are some potential quick builds, not all of them, but some potential ones that can be used in Eddystone. You should dig into the action plans more and check it all out. All of this stuff that I'm showing you is available on our website and it's available in an interactive way, so you can check it out in more detail. So we also provided a couple of solutions, examples of these countermeasures and action. This is actually at the intersection of Highland and Swarts in Chester City, right outside a charter school. We're really excited about this particular example because Chester is actually applying for an S S four A grant based on this intersection and doing then two more of the intersections. It just so happens that Section Highland Avenue was a local road, so they can go after this and not have to work with PennDOT to implement some of these solutions. So what are we committing to do? We came up with forty-three things that we're committed to doing and working on. Our recommendations are divided into categories of data design, education and training, land use and planning. land use and planning, policy and programs. And over the next year, we're committed to creating and maintaining a public Vision Zero data dashboard, which is already done, so you can check that off the list. We are working on creating a corridor concern response plan so the county is actually talking about applying for an SS4A grant so we can start working on this with PENDOT and do some road safety audits like you guys did here on two ninety-one. We're continuing to do regular public events to talk to people about corridors of concern and about Vision Zero. We were at John Keane's, Senator John Keane's Senior Fair in Chi just probably a month and a half ago. We're talking to local jurisdictions, like I am here tonight, so you can check that one off. And one of the things that we heard from residents, from some first responders was automated enforcement. How can we implement automated enforcement right now? We can, for the most part, except I think there are poor municipalities in Delaware County that are actually eligible for that, because they have an accredited police department and they have the minimum requirement of twenty thousand people in their municipality. You have to have those two requirements to be able to implement automated enforcement. And so we want to work with our legislators to see what we can do to do that. At the end of the day, we would prefer to have our police actually doing police work and let the cameras handle the enforcement. Some people aren't happy about that idea, but it does improve safety on Roosevelt Boulevard where they have enforcement there and reduce speeding and reducing speeding saves lives. So you can learn more by going to our Vision Zero Delco hub site. On that, I have taken all of this information that is in the safety action plan and put it into little apps that you can dig into and check out the data. The goal of this for me was to be as transparent as possible, so you could really check out this data yourself. So we have the corridors of concern that you can dig into, those crash profiles. You can see the inventory of the crashes, all that PENDOT data may easier use. You can also go there and report a concern if you're a resident. If there's someplace you've seen dangerous driving behavior or intersection that concerns you, you can report that and that comes back to me and goes into our Vision Zero Concern Dashboard. You can also really dig into the safety recommendations. You can dig into what we heard from the community. Also, we are tracking the municipalities on who's adopting Vision Zero. And when you say, hey, yeah, come to my municipality, you get changed to one color and when you adopt it, you get changed to another color. So Eddie Stone is in a good place right now, because it's under consideration. And also, if you're, if you have concerns about a road that you frequently walk on, that you think is not safe, you can go do a walk audit. And so we have an app that's based on the ARP walk audit that you can go do and it'll come back to me. And, you know, that's just there to empower the people to participate in this process of making our roads safer. Finally, we do have a Vision Zero pledge, which we're encouraging people to take. And it's just an opportunity to say that you're going to be a safe driver. You're not going to speed, you're not going to text and drive and you're going to respect pedestrians and bicyclists on the roadway, essentially. So that's what I got for you. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
I do.
Okay.
We have an issue with people writing stop signs. Is there anything you know about that?
Enforcement. But you have to see them doing it, like it's, and they're doing it. There's no rhyme or reason, it's constant.
So if you have to slow down anymore.
It's a rule.
Yeah, do that anymore.
Go right through it. I mean, honestly, that is truly an enforcement issue.
Is there a way that you can do it with cameras or no?
There is.
Okay.
No, Pennsylvania, you're not using it.
Right, so new legislation.
But in DC, they do have automated stop sign enforcement.
I have cameras everywhere in DC.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
But there is such thing as automated enforcement for stop signs. I can think of like a couple things that can help. And, and sometimes, this is like kind of some bizarre stuff, but when you, so the, the immediate example that comes to mind is in media on not Jackson Street, State Street, Baltimore, and then she, what is that? Edgemont, maybe? Well, it's at the intersection of Edgemont. Can't think of what the, one that goes Jefferson?
Jefferson.
Jefferson. At the intersection of Edgemont and Jefferson in media, they put a mini tiny, I don't even want to call it a roundabout, but it's a circle. It's not, it's not really a roundabout, like the roundabout in like, say, Swatmore, right? But it forces people to slow down, right? Because they're like, what is this thing in the middle of the road, right? Like, now I have to think about this. And a lot of traffic calming, that's really what it is. It's like, now I'm putting something here that's not necessarily expected. I have to maneuver around it, so I have to slow down to do that safely. And, you know, another way of doing it is like adding curb bump outs. Slows people down, because it's like, oh, all of a sudden, there's this thing kind of in the middle of the intersection, but not really in the middle of the intersection. Things like that can slow people down, speed humps. Slow people down, a lot, you know, a lot of times there's the issues with speed humps because of EMS. But you can actually work with EMS to act, there are different solutions for that. It doesn't have to be a full hop.
So Chief, isn't Ninth Street though safer?
I can't think of something like that.
I restored many years ago that it was.
I was.
I think it is, but I don't know.
So that, even though it's a state road.
It is.
At this, at this point, I would never toss.
The problem is our schools right there.
Right.
And our playgrounds right there.
All the more reason.
We have a church right there.
All the more reason to reach out to PENDOT, which we can help you do. And say, hey, this is a concern. This is what's happening at this intersection. We have a school, we have a church, we have a playground. So we have a bunch of vulnerable road users at this intersection and people are not stopping at the stop sign. You have your T word written in there.
That's right.
And I, I will say that PENDOT has been much more responsive. So I gave this presentation to Upper Providence. There was a resident there who was concerned about Baltimore Pike and North Ridley Creek and how it backs up right there, right? He sent me an email, I forwarded it to PENDOT. They actually responded to me in less than two hours. I was like, what? We reached out to them today about applying for this SS4A grant. They were like, we're happy to partner with you on anything you want to do. So they've been much more responsive. So definitely, if you reach out and you don't hear something, you reach out to us. We reach out.
What, what are your top three areas for crashes in Delaware County?
So the number, number, number one spot.
Not spot, reason.
Reason?
Yeah, like is it texting? Is it driving under the influence? Is it speeding, like speeding? Okay.
That's just like a no-brainer, but the, the number one location is actually Route two ninety-one in Chester. And then specifically the intersection of Hillman and. What's the SS4A? Eight Streets and Roads for All, federal funding that is actually open right now. The federal government is continuing to pursue, pursue that grant opportunity. It closes June twenty-sixth, which is right around the corner. I think there is meant to be another one for February year twenty twenty-six as well. Two, there are two kind of paths within that funding. One is planning and supplemental planning and demonstration. So you can develop your own action plan or you can do some work to enhance an existing action plan. So that's what the county's thinking of, wanting to apply for to do these road safety audits to enhance our existing understanding of our corridors of concern. Or you can do some demonstration projects. So we have a current grant that we're working on right now in Southeast Delco and Chester Upland to do some demonstration projects of QuickBuilds around schools, in two schools in each district. So we're working on that right now. And then the other funding is implementation. So that's where you go after construction money to like actually like really build something out. And to do that, you have to have a safety action plan. So the county decided we wanted to do the safety action plan so you guys wouldn't have to do one. Why do we need forty-nine different safety action plans when the safety crosses boundaries? And then not all of our municipalities have the bandwidth or the capacity to do their own safety action plan. So we just figured we would do it and, you know, handle it for everybody and unlock those federal dollars.
Thank you. Question, how do you make that with the Conchester?
So, yes, so the Conchester is actually, part of that is on the corridors of concern. That being said, it's not one that we would look for doing a road safety audit on because there is a plan for it anyway.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
But it did show up. fatalities and that.
I feel like Route two ninety-one.
Really?
Yeah.
But the Conchester is all.
But it used to be the Conchester, they made a lot of changes.
They did.
There have been a lot of changes. You know, and the unfortunate thing is on some of our roadways, we can't cure stupidity. So criminal behavior of like, let's drive a hundred miles an hour from the cops and then like kill ourselves.
Yeah.
There's nothing I can do for that. Do you know what I mean? Like thinking of the crash that happened.
Road analysis won't prevent that.
I mean.
I'm surprised four, four seventy-six isn't like.
Well, so, okay, that's a great point. We actually pulled four seventy-six and ninety-five out because they would have skewed the data so horribly that that's where everything would have been. And we have extremely little control of that. Like, if we don't have a lot of control over two ninety-one, for example, we have like next to nothing on ninety-five or four seventy-six. Now, the interesting thing is in working with, with PENDOT, say for example, with Scoople, right? When I was growing up, they called it the Sherkill.
Yeah.
There's very, very few serious or fatal crashes on there because the congestion is so bad that nobody can speed. And speed is what kills, right? So you might have crashes on there, but people are walking away from them. So like, that's another thing, like even like during rush hour on ninety-five and four seventy-six, like I know, I'm always like, oh my God, these people are, you know, road rage and this and that. But it's actually probably safer than in the middle of the night where people can go ninety, you know?
Yeah, because the speed limit's fifty-five and nobody does fifty-five on four seventy-six.
No.
Not so.
So would road rage be different then?
What's that?
Road rage.
No, road rage. Well, so road rage is kind of hard to identify, right? Just like they say, like texting and driving, you can't, you know, it, it's the same thing. I mean, unless somebody admits, oh, I was pissed off. Kind of hard to, you know, say, yeah, this, this happened. But we, we did get a lot of great stuff from our first responders when we did do the focus group with them. Like actually, one of the things that we heard is they wanted, wanted to feel more supported by their community. I was like, are you kidding me? Like, I feel like the community really does support you guys. And what they meant was actually the district justices. Because the district justices let people off on speeding tickets.
Yes.
And other tickets. So what's the point of writing a ticket if it's just going to get thrown out? So that was very interesting. So we're actually talking about doing a training to the district justices on Vision Zero and what the goals of Vision Zero are and like why it's important to make sure people are held to account.
I have a question about the grants. So when you talk about grants and write grants, who's writing those grants?
You're looking at her?
There you go. And what is the, do you, do you charge for that? Is that a charge or does that come out of the grant money?
So the grants that I write, I write for the county. That being said, right now I'm helping Chester write their grant that they're going after. So we haven't charged anything yet, ever before for writing a grant. I don't know if that's something that we would do. In this case, Chester also got support from Safe Roots Partnership, which used to be like Safe Roots to schools specifically, but now they've expanded. And they got funding from the William Penn Foundation to provide technical support to municipalities if they wanted to go after writing a grant. Now, I'm working with Lisa Gaffney, who's the Director of Chester Economic Development Authority and the Riverfront Alliance. And she has done quite a bit of the writing, but I have also like been like here and I, and I crunched the numbers for her and stuff like that. So, you know, I'm always happy to help and share like, here's what we wrote, you know what I mean? And kind of like take that, that weight off and let people's brains start.
We can run an office board here.
So are some, are any of these grants matching grants?
So the SS4A grant requires a twenty percent match. That being said, labor and volunteer hours and partners with like, say, if you ask the county to reach out to the planning director and say, hey, can you use some of your staff time? She would likely say yes, because she has already said yes before. So like my time, my manager's time, our community engagement specialist's time could be counted towards that match. So that's a, that's one thing I really do like about the SS4A grant is that staff time can count towards that.
And then if you're awarded a grant, who manages the grant through, from the, once the award process happens to the end, is that, does that go back to the municipality or is that?
It goes back to the municipality. FHWA, my experience so far with our grant administrator has been really great. Bill is very helpful, he answers a lot of questions. He'll be like, all right, before you submit it, send it to me. Let me look it over, make sure everything's right. And then I'll let you know if you should change anything or if it's ready to be submitted. So that's been really, really helpful. Our office manager also helps with a lot of that stuff too. Thanks, yeah.
Can I ask any questions? Thank you so much for having me.
Yeah, you've done a great job.
Should I answer us?
Yeah, not, I'm happy, we are, the county is, is happy to help you guys. You know, we really just want to see our roads be safer for everybody.
We, we all look, because saving lives is the most important thing.
Right, especially, you know, our kids and stuff like that. So, you know, feel free to reach out about that intersection you were talking about.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do to help you guys.
Because I brought my backpack, I can't do.
You don't understand, I can't remember these things. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
And by the way, you guys have like a huge audience. Like, is there something like going to blow up later tonight to stick around for? I mean, like, this is the most proud meeting here, right? This is the most proud meeting I've ever seen. So good job. Good job, citizens, for coming out and shutting up. And it sounds fun.
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Take care.
You stay for home.
I say.
And we've been on our management's line here to give updates, but we will do our best to give the information as we can. We have updated details. A little bit of this, this post between what was promised and what's actual, so we're working on that. Chief, what was all about the ambulance?
First, we're trying to take possession of the ambulance, however, sir. So we're, we had information that you could be able to.
Chief, what was the purchase price of the ambulance?
I believe it was eighty thousand, but I'm not sure.
I have that here. The, we were accepted for the ambulance bid of eighty thousand. The original open bid was supposed to be ninety-three. Other townships outfitted the chief's car that we did on and they allowed us to bid on another vehicle. So after conferring, they decided on a more expensive unit that they had up for auction for thirty-one thousand. We also placed a bid for eighteen thousand and we won the Ford Explorer. The total outlay for both units will be ninety.
We got an Explorer for eighteen thousand, a Camaro for eighteen thousand.
The eighteen, the Explorer, you bid on that. It's another.
QRS, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, so the word is QRS and both vehicles come with.
It's huge.
Yeah.
Vehicle license, if there are else, correct?
In order to keep continuity service, the family to take the. Our company handles so we can utilize some of their license. QRS truck, we put the BRR license or the fire company's license to the birds.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, JP, can you leave us update on Perry Calibot?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Manager, there's been several conversations with the folks of Barry Calibot. And they're proposing to use where the WPT warehouse sites were manufacturing site. They're concerned about the tariffs and they're, they want to move their facilities out of Canada. They have to just focus. So as of today, there's only been, I would say, maybe three or four conversations, Zoom meetings, about the details that would be necessary for them to change one of the warehouses into a manufacturing facility.
So this is also on the idea stage?
More or less, nothing's been submitted yet. I mean, they are looking at details.
What's the manufacturing?
They have a manufacturing shop, yeah.
I know.
Yeah, Eric Calabit.
They're not saying from roasting beans into making chocolate, correct?
From a warehouse to actually manufacturing. So they will still remain who they are as far as the warehouse facility, these are what they propose. And then the WPT site would be a manufacturing facility. There was news to me that they do eight billion dollars a year in chocolate sales.
Okay.
Not why that, until the start of this conversation. However, uh, nothing's been submitted. We've given them a lot of necessary detail that needs to be submitted. And to date, nothing.
It's just an idea at this point.
So far, yeah.
How about the road safety audit?
The road safety audit is also part of the Second Street extension, so the two lines, more or less the same exact.
Okay.
Item. We have the attention from two thirty six. It was like frame eighty or fifty down. Or interactive and solid secondary extension, then connecting it for two ninety one, which we talked about many, many times. The audit is necessary due for the funding, uh, which we're going to have to see funding through multi-modal sources, multi-modal and not funds. So the road safety audit is part of that requirement for the funding.
Okay. Any other questions? JK?
Chance residents will get free drop up.
I wonder. They own, they supply a lot of, they they do a lot of, uh, give them, there's a lot of chocolate too, so.
Well, we smell it all the time. At least they could do it to give us a piece of chocolate. Yeah, it's not like that.
All right, so our code department, we do have our new employee who has started and he's gone around making sure that Eddie Stone looks the best that he can look. Memorial Day, we did have record attendance, I heard. Um, I was out there. I know Beth is out there. I saw Councilman Perry out there. I saw Councilman Walter. And, no, when did I see him? I seen him before that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did six hundred hot dogs.
Well, yeah, so Councilman Chris was helping roll hot dogs. I was helping with the phone booth. We were all out there having fun. There was a lot of people. Everyone had a good time. I think our fireworks display this year was phenomenal. It was one of the best ones we've had on the side. It was very impressive.
And when we were in Hershey, I saw a fireworks place that had it all set up. So we got their card to see how much they charge for fireworks.
I think we just had a really good time.
So is there a spreadsheet on money, how much you caused and how much?
It was between nine thousand five hundred.
Are you talking about total?
Memorial.
For all of it?
Yes, Donna, do you have a spreadsheet of that?
I don't have it, like, to be honest.
We can, we have, we have it also. It's, there's definitely, everything is in the budget with the financials and the reports that we get. It's, it was about twenty thousand dollars is what we, every year. That's every single year. Uh, there was about twenty hundred dollars brought in. And every year it's always budgeted for twenty.
Well, I would do it to.
I said it like three times then.
I think I've seen you more in the past week than I have in a very long, all year, maybe. Not a bad thing.
The reason why it's thirteen percent.
I didn't go, it wasn't. You could have the Asher.
Thirteen thousand here for twenty four thousand donations for.
You would back someone that reported.
Charge up, I guess. Those aren't as many going out asking for donations, I guess, where the donations just stay coming. All right, moving on. Any other questions? We could tell about borough associations when we were making the copies. That the chief, the mayor, myself, and Vice President Chris had attended the Borough Association Conference in Hershey. We had a lot of information to bring back to the residents and to look into for Eddie Stone. He did represent uh them through the boroughs. I was in there and voted on some legislation that is going to be presented and and if it, I will report back how it ends up. They're supposed to give us a report of the the final voting. And then do our report back. Um, we did have a fire on Second Street. Um, there are, our fire department, I was very proud that day. I went down. Mr. Perry was down there, chief was down there, um, mayor was down there. That's where I saw you at the fire. Councilman Fulton was there. I was really impressed. Assistant Fire Chief Myers did a really great job coordinating everything, uh, keeping everyone safe. Um, we did have, there was uh two cats that um had fatalities, unfortunately, but um we were able, that no one else was injured. There was a couple of people that had some sort of ventilation. They were fine at the end of the day. But I was really proud of our fire department. They did a great job. Um, our emergency services really did, did step up so late. Does anyone else have anything to add on that?
Four cats laying there on the ground when I got there. Two were gone. Were able to bring the other two back.
Asses it, yeah. So it was amazing a lot.
So they slowly came back to life and they survived.
Yeah, and Councilman Perry and I went and got water for the firefighters and uh we uh were able to coordinate getting that, the people set up with Rick Lawson and stuff. We did offer the borough hall for them to uh wait in, but no one wanted to say that. They wanted to see where they were with their stuff, I guess. Very sad. There is a GoFundMe going around. Uh, if you're on social media, you can look into that to help the um the residents that were affected by the fire.
Can you give the name of the residents or they can know?
I don't know that we can, but there is a GoFundMe out there if you're on the social media, talking to town or.
You want to talk at ten?
Yeah, you'll see it on there. It's also on uh Starlight and it's also on uh Eddie Stone Temple and I'm not sure it's on Eddie Stone Borough, but we can sure. Moving on, public forum.
First, I do want to say Memorial Day was nice. It was very nice. That was the first time probably since I've been here that I've been able to attend it all day long. Um, so everything was nice. The fireworks were very spectacular. Um, I have a few things that concerns me. Vice President, both I heard you say earlier about Eddie Stone Kids. Being Eddie Stone Kids, just being Eddie Stone Kids. Um, I have a concern with that uh lighthouse wall in there from being open twenty four seven. That is correct, right? And certainly.
You can say it well.
So I don't know that it's open. It shouldn't be open twenty four seven. I know it's been opened more because there are softball, there are softball teams using the field. So I know they are open to more than what they should be. If they are being, if they are open twenty four seven, please, we can definitely look into that and take a look at it, make sure they're only open at the times that they're supposed to be there. So thank you for bringing that to our.
Okay, yeah, and I also wanted to bring to your attention just the major offenders in this area. And one nine oh zero two two area, area code.
Yeah.
Magnificent. Yeah, there's thirty three.
Yes.
Thirty three in this area and there's two hundred and sixty two in Chester.
Yeah.
So we want, want to kind of keep up. Yeah, we got to keep a close watch on that, on our kids.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's my first um concern. And um, we all know that normally I see it in your uh meeting. Just wondering, who's driving? Who's driving the trash?
So right now, we can't make a decision because it's not on the agenda and we have laws that we have to follow.
It is on the agenda.
Well, no, 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 to hire someone.
Oh, yeah.
No, I said who's driving now.
So we, we are following the recommendation of the union. Um, we're still in union negotiations with the highway department. So we have to follow their recommendations and uh we have a temporary person we can hire.
It's a third party contracted person. So our options are a third party contracted person. So like if Norm was out sick or out for an emergency or on vacation, it's the same thing. So it's a third party contracted person. And then it's a member of the local one of seven.
Okay, and that's the local that the guys are.
Yes.
Where, where are we with um contract negotiations?
We're still in them. We're still in them. I'm somewhere.
I know.
Sometimes they take a while. You, you think that you sit down and, you know, when they sit down and borough has one side, one vision, they have.
Their salaries are public information, right? The highway department. Wh- what are they making?
You're asking me for exact pennies and dollars right now. Honestly, I, I don't know.
Ten dollars.
It's like fifteen eights, but not all of them make that though. They're all different.
And it depends on what's on the fees that they have a driver's license or finish to yield.
The highest paid person in highways, what's he making?
Was Norm.
Was Norm.
Uh.
He was here for.
Almost twenty six.
Twenty six years.
And that's not, we've been six hours. Almost twenty six now. And that's not.
That's still not a lot.
And when you add benefits, it's fully funded, benefits for the entire.
I understand that I, I work for. Yeah, it's still not a lot. Um, especially starting, if they're starting at fifteen dollars an hour. Walmart, Cheepley, and I just looked it up myself again. All of them were making about that. These guys really were poor. I, I watched them. They were very poor and I think things are.
We agree with you on that. It's, the only problem is with government, you have to, you have to wait when you're coming up with budgets. Everything has to be budgeted. So if you want to give someone a higher raise, that has to be budgeted and the budgets go in at the end of the year. So that's, that's the problem. It was not brought up to us. It wasn't brought up to us until after the budget was already in and go join and accepted and it was new year. So we agree with you, but our hands are tied.
Speaking of the benefits, how's Mike doing?
He's okay. I seen him today.
Is he home?
He is home. He was out today. He was taking it like, oh, I'm sorry. But he, he, I saw him in town today.
Thank you.
Speaking of Mike, where's Mike, where's Mike Bannon? I've been coming since January. I haven't seen him.
Bannon?
But, yes, Councilman Bannon. No, I know he had a child.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You could say like personal issues.
Yeah.
Okay.
Answer it, yeah.
Is he coming back? I mean, don't we have a right to know that as?
We don't know. We don't know, so we can't tell you.
And unfortunately, he would be the first council member to do that.
To do well, is that right?
To not show up to several meetings in there.
Like six months, because I've been coming since January. So at what point do you guys think, actually?
We cannot, we believe we cannot.
No, because he's elected by me, guys.
But you can't ask for his resignation now.
You can ask, but he doesn't have to give it.
Have to give it.
Wow.
And then it's an appointed position until his term will be up with the, this, this December.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, years ago, we had a council person who didn't show up for eleven months. And not, well, word on the street, I don't know if it's true or not, I'm just saying, and I'm not really gossiping, that he doesn't even live in Eddie Stone. So I don't know. You might want to investigate that.
He's not the first few of us that have come around.
Yeah, yeah, the mayor, the mayor, they said. When I came to a meeting before, he had moved and all of it. It was sounding the same conversation, just a different person.
Okay.
Um. You know, last mayor walked out without telling anybody. Well, we're not talking about.
He did, he like, he did, and then we had a council member that let all the residents be upset and ask where he was, and then they wrote that letter, resignation.
Yeah. Yeah. How many months was that? He left in October.
October. Yeah.
Yeah, like, like two months after he left, when he found out that he picked up, packed out, left and didn't call anybody. Now, he got married and then he left.
All right.
All due respect to Councilor, to Mayor, those that categorize him as just packing up and leaving town. The gentleman received, the gentleman received an appointment to the, to the Biden administration, working for the Small Business Administration, helping veterans of the United States. So he, he, he definitely had to relocate out of town to move down to Washington DC to do the work that he was appointed to do. And when he found that that was going to be a position that kept him out of town for a significant period of time, he did the right thing by resigning.
Months later. And he took it as, when he was became mayor, he wanted to be mayor so bad. I have two more things if, if I can, please.
I don't know. You have enough.
Well, I want to roll, baby, I want to roll. So, I mean, I see y'all scratching out on the agenda, but I see Ken Riley's settlement was on Facebook too. I saw it on Facebook on the agenda. The right thing to do. Was that a mistake or is that public information? Or was that a mistake? It seems to me that.
No, I don't think the first name was listed.
Was it Riley? Everybody, anybody in Eddie Stone knows.
We have many Riley's. We have multiple Riley's.
Well, I know who it is.
It's still on the website.
Yeah, I, I knew who it was. So my next question is, since you brought it up publicly, can you tell us how much the settlement was for?
No. No, no, no.
Um, one last thing.
Not at all.
Um, and this is the chief.
So then, yes, Slosser, just important is that we are not.
Yeah, just because the employment matter, personal, that the borough can't discuss.
I understand.
Or concluded litigation. There's a likelihood this may include, because there may be a resolution tonight.
I do understand. That's why I was surprised to see that in a public forum. Um, one more thing, please, if I can, with you. Can we reinstitute Town Watch if we have, can we look at having Town Watch?
Sure. Um, do you have a, a group of residents who are interested?
I'll find them. I'll find some, I'm definitely, yeah.
We had residents that were interested in this before and they were all done hell and chief sat with them and then it just didn't go anywhere.
Okay.
I know hopefully they're not the same ones to come back. Like some new people.
Well, the two other guys on the corner of uh Seville Avenue, a nice, they did it for years.
Maybe, yeah, yeah. For those two guys.
Little flashlights.
Yeah, yes, they had, they had their, their.
Yellow jacket.
Yeah.
Safety.
Oh, yeah, that's the nice at the corner. Yeah.
They did it for years.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Slosser, just to, you know, touch base on, on something that Sperry brought up about Mr. Bannon. If the DV has moved out of town, what is the process that should be followed? I know that the easy thing would be for him to tender a resignation, saying that he's no longer a president of Eddie Stone. But what's the legal obligation to be decided to move out of the jurisdiction?
Yeah, so that's the difficulty in Pennsylvania, if someone's elected, it's very narrow how you can remove from office. It's impeachment or conviction of, it's definitely felonies and then certain misdemeanors. I, I don't know that one. So it's extremely narrow when someone wins the popular vote for politics to be able to get rid of them. Now, if he's not living here, that could, is the council where to direct. I don't know anything about this, but I can tell you to get someone off the council is the statute's very narrow, very limited.
Yeah, we have council that, that supposedly, that supposedly.
What's going on with us, Kenny? Anything else? Professional reports. Listen to. In May, one million five hundred thirty three thousand four hundred fifty six dollars in taxes were received. Colonel Caddis, who was found in the state tax hearing from our system. Uh, general fund incentives of five hundred ninety three thousand five hundred and fifty five dollars first, which included ninety seven thousand nine twenty four, the capital purchases of discussed earlier, and two hundred ninety one thousand sixty one dollars to the council table. Here's the date. All uh, financials, financials have been provided, all financials. A good fairware have been reconciled through May twenty twenty five. Thank you. Some questions on that? Moving on, through the paper. Moving on, give the paper.
Month of May, there was thirty two total inspections performed, two stop work orders, two total work permits issued, zero contractor license issued, twenty eight total rental license issued, two total re-inspections and four silver ladder inspections. Total fee brought in, there was.
Total fee brought in was nine thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars. Year-to-date total is a hundred and ten thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars.
Thank you. Engineer's report, do you think?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I reported last month Albert Cipollone Jr. and Son at Sunnet defeated this April group at the White House Hall. And I reported last month the flag pole that was damaged. Second one was also delivered.
Oh.
Waiting on extra dynamite.
Third time's the charm, right?
Certainly hope so. As far as the HVAC White House Hall, we're working to find a replacement for the eight coil to provide air conditioning. The freon regulations changed in January of twenty-five. The current allowable freon is R four five. Four B, the issue with retrofitting, good fitting is that it is flammable and factory systems include thermal protection, which makes it difficult to retrofit. As far as the flooring, we met on site with the flooring supply contractor to determine our options to replace the floor in the gym. The contractor all confirmed that mercury is. Present in the flooring and is an environmental contaminant. We're going to have that floor sample taken to a laboratory, determine the level of mercury and what extent is necessary to repaint that floor. The phase two study at uh the Tenacle Waterfront parcel had begun again this week. So drilling rates were down there this week, actually started last week and continue this week. The um sanitary sewer metering, the tent flow meters have been installed. Uh, they're up and running as of yesterday. We expect to file that data, collect that data for at least ten to twelve months. And the storm pipe maintenance, storm sewer plumbing maintenance between Seventh and the River, between Creek to Creek, that pre-construction meeting happened Friday. And we expect more construct contractors to be on site two weeks from today to get that worked up.
Any questions, Chief?
Uh, for the for the flow meters, are you monitoring everyone or are you just pulling the pull tool?
It's online data.
Oh, so it is online data.
We can collect it and any data.
So you can collect just one day?
Yeah. Once they're up and running. They put up and running as of this.
Is this kind of being recorded every day? So that way you can go back and forth.
The history of that will also correct that.
My question. My other question is, uh, just because of the mercury in the floor of White House Hall, that is not a danger to the children playing in there?
No, it currently, no, it's not.
Actually.
Correct. But in order to put a new floor in, you have to sand it if it remains in place, either remains in place, we can sand and explode it in the floor, or needs to be removed. In any situation, then it has to be.
You need extra measures. Uh, Mr. Mayor has a question.
Um, if this company delivers again and asphalt is damaged, what is the procedure?
It's the pole, the flag.
If it's damaged again, between the water or what?
Well, no, we have, it has to be paid for.
Well, it has to be.
Will not be paid for, install.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I think it's twenty-five.
Are we good?
Yeah.
All right. Fire EMS chief, do you mind?
Sure. Uh, fire report, May twenty twenty-five, twelve, one A stand, two within, one up land, two prospect park, two tentacle, one market sold, one under the park, three automatic fire alarms, one CO alarm. One cover assignment, one investigation, one brush, total nineteen alarms, twelve by day, seven by night, members responding fifty-four average.
Never mind.
Before you move on, it's just one quick question. I see members responding at average two point eight four per call. Is that inclusive or excluding the base staff?
Oh, I thi- I think it includes the base staff. Um, I don't do this.
So we've got three people in the firehouse with the base staff. This is what you're calling me with this report is if the base staff got trucked out, that they were the only people responding.
I I would, I would think so. Uh, I'll still check the numbers.
Thank you.
I believe it was six members that were that responded to that second street fire and.
Yeah, there were more than. But in the beginning, it was the base staff that got struck out.
Right. I'm not, I'm just looking at the number. That's.
No, no, I'm just, I that's.
I know we have three base staff members in the firehouse.
That if we didn't have those paid members, the response went this way and it went to a second alarm because there was no one responding. Any other questions?
That's it for fire.
Anyone else have any questions for fire? Who's next, EMS chief?
EMS report uh for twenty twenty-five, forty-two total EMS dispatches, three two falls down by the seven EMS, either by antlers or scratches. Twenty-eight during the day, fourteen at night, EMS holding out there in the falls, two are twelve. Also, there are notifications down here, some issues about the ambulance. Um, the fire department ambulance has a serious engine failure, so the fire companies would be balancing that. Um, and that in the process that takes only several months, uh, they had a lunar ambulance issue. Uh, we had nothing but issues with that. It kept going out of service. It was not. Um, that went back to Jersey, back and forth a few times. Uh, in the interim, we're able, uh. Very happy Radnor Fire Department allowed us to be their ambulance, but by licensure rules, you're only allowed to have it for seven days. So then we got a second East Ambulance Company and uh it came in with engine problems. But we get that up and running. Um, it's going to get certified tomorrow and that's the reason why we're either waiting on arrival of program. So we get that certified and have continuity service and provide the best possible service.
Chief has been working really hard on all of that, all of you. Anyone have any questions in the EMS report? Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to put my name on the board. Well, public comment is, we're in a certain time. Did you have a question on this or is it something?
No, don't worry about it.
Is it something else that you were asking around?
Yeah, it's just. No, not this one.
Oh, okay. Um. Maybe the end of this.
It's all right.
Please, you, you again?
Yeah. Uh, police report for uh May twenty twenty-five, so four hundred and eighty-eight full of service. Uh, fifty-eight in in the morning, hundred ninety-six in the day, two hundred thirty-four in the evening. I just want to kind of touch base that Memorial Day was vital this year and we actually started on time this year. It's our first time of season start on time. Pretty proud of that. And I see Patty in the audience. Um, I think Brett Ward's doing a perfect job of defending the building. Um, Memorial Day was a success and I think that the base camp is going to be.
Any questions about the police report? All right, who's the ones for action items? May have a motion to approve the minutes from May twelfth, uh, two thousand twenty-five regular council meeting. I have a first, uh, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the treasurer's report, including bankrupt conciliations for the month of May two thousand twenty-five as presented by Chris Christensen. May have a second? I didn't hear what it, whoever said what matters that? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May have a motion to accept the B C R report for the month of May two thousand twenty-five as presented by Code. Bath, Rose and. Uh, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. May have a motion to accept the engineer's report as presented by J P Kelly for the month of May two thousand twenty-five. So order. I have a motion and a second. May, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to accept the fire report for the month of April and May two thousand twenty-five. We only got May, right?
Yeah.
All right, so let's cross out people. May, I have a motion to accept fire report from May two thousand twenty-five as presented by Chief. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to accept the EMS report for the month of May two thousand twenty-five as presented by Chief. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to accept the police report for the month of May two thousand twenty-five as presented by Chief. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to hire EMS person Amelia Christensen? I have a motion and a second.
Madam President, just one quick question. How many EMS staff members do we have?
That brings us up to my line. We think for the three shifts that we're doing.
That's because we added the other shift.
I understand. And how many, Chief, have you identified the the what's the magic number, the number that you need to have once staff reveal that? Make sure we do twenty-four hour day, seven day week, three hundred and sixty-four day coverage with three.
I want to say, I want to say right now we're at this free spot, but we'll have to take a look at the schedule and see how it comes down. They're all part-time and they all work out much.
So I believe we had fifteen before we added the the first.
Yeah, I I I just simply ask the question because it seems like every meeting we're hiring, you know, another. I started looking at them. I I had to take the the the. Well, I was trying to keep the numbers straight. That's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Um, I have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve res- resolution twenty twenty-five dash nine, provision zero. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to accept Norman Quinn's resignation.
I just want to say, his resignation, he put it was over hostile work department. This is since these guys, I'm sorry, go and got into the union and they they've been. More worse stuff's been put on them and the thirty hours are being cut back on them. Yeah, it's just been nothing but aggravation to these guys. Nonstop. I want people to know it's.
Did he go to his union representation? Because if he didn't come to the Borough, I know nothing about any of that. So if he didn't come to the Borough and he didn't feel that the Borough solved it, he has a union representative and he could have filed a grievance against the Borough.
Representative. Quick friend of the council.
He's a state representative.
The guy from the.
Dave Alisa? He's a state rep. And he's a Democrat. It's in conjunction with you or you?
I I am, I I I believe that it's a party affiliation. That's absolutely nothing to do with.
I'm just saying.
And being a business agent for the police or one of them.
All right, I think we're getting off track again. Um, can I have, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Mrs. President, who's your second?
That was Bill Bolton, second, first, Draper.
Jim Duke was at work over here?
We all are. That's okay, because we can follow it. I'll have to accept K R. That's correct. E, oh, okay. May have a motion to resolve and accept K R summons, uh, it's resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten.
The word.
Sorry. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to temporary hire the C D L driver for trash at Public Works to cover the interim. I'm opposed and that we get it posted and get the petition filled.
A question on this too. A while back, Bill Bolton, you said that we we couldn't hire anybody as long as the negotiations. How is it safer?
I'm just.
No, that's a good question. So I. So so I I did this was going on when I heard about Mr. Quinn. So I engaged the labor attorney for the Borough who's in direct contact with the union during the C B A collective bargaining agreement negotiation. And he believed forward of the issue the Borough would face. We don't get a temporary person. That is trash building.
I understand.
As a union representative, oh, it's fine with it. So we had full disclosure because of what you're saying, I know you were a union member. That is important, but that was all covered. Uh, A to A to Z. The temporary move is just that temporary.
Yeah.
The Borough intends that, and anyone who's qualified with the C D L.
Anyone else have any questions before we take action?
Uh, what is the rate of pay for the person that we're going to be hiring?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six an hour?
Minus the um.
With no benefits.
No benefits.
Is this a driving only position or is this going to be?
No. Anything else? Anyone else? Any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, we we call for motion to adjourn. You know, I always like to get an update on the police contracts.
Oh, we signed on here today.
No, you 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 left it off. I don't understand.
I didn't do it.
You're very good at heading me off with the past. You know, I was surprised when I saw on Facebook that the agenda was posted. I was like, darn, there's no update on the police contract.
So thank you for the reminder. We appreciate that. So it is still in the works. Um, there was a date that was offered. We jumped on it. Unfortunately, the other side didn't want to be available that time.
Yeah.
So there is a meeting to put together a proposal from our side to hand over to the F A G side um to make sure that we are still moving forward with this and it is not just sitting. Uh, and then hopefully we're going to get either a proposal back or some dates. And then as far as the uh union, we just had a meeting.
Oh, and so you you're you switched gears. You went, you're still in the police or you're under the.
Oh, that was.
So do you have, what is the, what is the date that that you have, the next date that you're going to meet with the?
They did not give us dates yet because they're telling us their next dates are not until July now.
So their next dates are not until July.
That is what they.
But they don't have a a July date, so that could change is what she is.
So so.
We had a May date and then they said, sorry, we're not, we're no longer available that time, unfortunately.
So so from a back and forth standpoint, consider the fact that council only meets once a month. You know, we're 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 pushing late summer into the fall before you think we're in a position to have a a contract that we would vote.
Well, I'm hoping that, it's not up to us. I mean, I'm hoping that when we send over a proposal, maybe they can send something back. We can kind of do it via back and forth with that and sit down at the table once and hopefully maybe have something that July.
Hopefully.
I mean, I know that this is going to be done by like.
Yeah.
February, March.
Yeah.
It's considering that, you know, we we have an election coming up in November and and five of the seven members of council that sit on this board currently are up for reelection.
Correct.
Is there any consideration given that just given the police a wage only increase since they've been working without a contract since? December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four?
That has not been requested on either side.
Okay. Is that something that the Borough would consider? Because, you know, we're right now, right now, we're we're into arrears for, you know, whatever the raises are, plus whatever the overtime is for, you know, right now it's pushing six months.
We we made sure that when we get to budget, budget.
I'm just maybe.
We're getting that.
You're negotiating. No, I I'm being careful where I go.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
Negotiating against the Borough right now.
Yeah.
How is that?
Well, because.
Any, anyway, so this is two sessions of discussions.
How do you? We should give them this.
No, I didn't say we should give them anything. I said, you you'd consider giving them a wage only.
That is just.
That is, whoa, it's easy as way out of coming on one year, you know, it's.
All right.
With municipality.
Let's save this for each session. Is there anything further?
So as far as the chief serves the. So as far as the heat service, we met two weeks ago. Um, and we, well, we met with the business agent two weeks ago. You're.
Getting there?
We're getting there. We're we're, we are, we are ninety percent tentative agreement through the contract.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good sign.
Satisfied?
Completely and thoroughly satisfied. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Anyone else have anything before we move on and adjourn? All right, I have a motion. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Send in a second? All in favor?